I pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, perfect and just as God. Now, Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just lost my presentation. I'm not going to be able to read it. Tonight, I wanted to update you on the Marlboro Public Schools District Improvement Plan and the work that teachers and administrators and some of you participated in. And so, Mr. Diaz? Okay, thanks. Could you? Yes, thanks. As you know, the strategies for improvement identifies our long-term priorities and drives our budget planning. And the district improvement plan is developed to identify our short-term focus areas, staff, the staff that are responsible for addressing those areas, and how we will measure them. So always, the strategies for improvement is going to continue to drive what we're doing and will continuously be updated. But the district improvement plan will be our actions that we're focusing on for that immediate year, and it's a three-year plan. District improvement plans, in the past, we have had a format that would focus on the following areas. And in that, in the past, we focused on leadership and governance, curriculum and instruction, assessment, human resources and professional development, student support, financial and asset management. I know that many of the committee members in the past have also been members of school councils and have worked on school improvement plans at the school level. And that's supposed to drive the focus and some of the actions that each school is going to do. It is easier, we have discussed many times in the past, for the school improvement plans to be driven by a district improvement plan. So for this year, Mr. Diaz, thank you. We want to align our school and district goals for the 2023-24 school year. The district improvement plan and school improvement plans begin with the same template. The district improvement plan will focus on the following goals, which all school improvement plans, which will be submitted to the committee next, at the next meeting, under the areas of academic achievement, curriculum and instruction, professional development, and the PD Committee reviewed that section, district and school climate, safety and discipline, and parent and community support. So those are the, those are the five areas. This is the one. To talk a little bit about the timeline that we've used, in January 2023, teachers, building and district leaders updated the Marlboro Public Schools strategies for improvement and projected multi-year funding needs. And this was embedded into this year's budget book. That would always be the process we will continue. January through March 2023, the district leadership team, which meets every other week, developed first drafts of the district improvement plan. In March 2023, teachers, building and district leaders, school committee members, provided feedback on this draft. And since that time, district leadership team reviewed feedback and we made edits to the district improvement plan, which has been presented to you in the packet as a draft in draft form. I'm submitting the district improvement plan for your review. At the next meeting, I will be asking, I do believe that a district improvement plan is something that you would have to approve. But we will look at that, or at least accept for information. Yes?
Yeah, I know the school improvement plans, we just.
We only accept as information.
I don't know about that. We will look some more at the district improvement plan. But all the principals will be here and I will submit, they are submitting their district improvement plans to me by June 7th, so that they will be in the next packet. And at that point, you'll be able to provide any feedback. That's the last one, right? So I am submitting the draft. If anyone has any comments for me tonight, I would be happy to hear. Or you can reach out to me at any point before the next meeting so that I can address any questions or concerns and make any recommended revisions.
Any questions? Any questions?
Okay. Grade three through 10 MCAS, I'd like to thank all the teachers, administrators, instructional technology specialists in the IT department for their support during the recess, recent MCAS administration. On May 16th and 17th, approximately 2,700 students across six schools in grades three through eight and 10 participated in mathematics MCAS assessments. Our systems and devices allow us to schedule these district-wide testing sessions, which we never believed would be, would be able to do even just five years ago. This flexibility in scheduling ensured that students received the maximum instruction prior to the test dates. So I'd like to thank everyone who makes that possible. I'd like to remind all parents and guardians that I sent out an invitation for them to join me and members of my leadership team for an informal discussion on the Marlboro schools. We have scheduled 10:00 AM morning coffee and a 4:00 PM afternoon tea on May 30th, which is next week. Parents and guardians are invited to attend one of these open sessions. I've also added teacher coffees on June 6th and 8th as well, to allow for that dialogue as well. I've also submitted my end-of-the-year self-assessment attached to my report. I look forward to feedback from the committee on my evaluation. And finally, I'd like to share that Angela House has extended her leave through next year. Ms. Dolan will continue as principal and is looking forward to continue working with the parents, students, and educators in the building. Thank you.
Any questions from the committee? Ms. Matthews.
Just a clarification on Ms. Dolan, not, just, it's still a continuation of an interim.
Interim position, yes. We don't have a permanent position.
Right, I know. I just wanted to make sure the public was aware in case of that. Thank you.
Any other questions? See you none. Mr. Diaz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a quick update from the Office of Finance and Operations. I wanted to update the committee on some investments we're making with FY '23 end-of-year funds. As is customary, we'll work with the district and city leadership every year to identify potential investments for any end-of-year efficiencies. For this year, we have made a few different investments. District-wide investments include some supplemental student furniture. As you know, two years ago, we purchased replacement student ceiling furniture pre-K through 12. It was $1.6 million furniture at that time. We have continued to grow and our principals have requested a few more pieces of furniture for some additional spaces that we didn't originally buy for. So we're, we're going to be fully purchased now. We're also buying some additional cameras district-wide. We're funding our technology capital plan, which is something that we do every year out of end-of-year funds. We're purchasing an ELA curriculum. There's an asterisk there because that's the total cost for the curriculum, except that some of that cost will be funded by SRT3. And we're also implementing a parent communication software. We're making some facility capital improvements. We're looking to replace the remaining rooftop units over at Whitcomb, the HVAC rooftop, rooftop units. We're making some roof improvements to Jarek. At MHS, we're doing some HVAC efficiency work. And in conjunction with that, we're replacing some of the condenser fans at that school, upgrading curtains and lighting at the Kane Elementary Stage, and stage, replacing stage curtains at Marlboro High and Jarek, not doing Whitcomb and Richer right now. We're improving the Whitcomb Theater Sound. We're also making an investment for our custodial crew. Couple of years ago, we purchased a Kubota to assist with our snow removal at the Whitcomb campus. That has been highly successful. And we're purchasing a new one to help with the Good Now High School campus so that we can tackle the snow there more efficiently and more quickly so that the custodial staff can go back to their regular jobs. Making some investments in supplies and equipment for the custodial crew. And we're also refinishing the Whitcomb gym floor. Last, on my update tonight, I wanted to circle back and talk about transportation. First, I would be remiss if I didn't express my gratitude to everyone involved during the three-day strike a couple of weeks ago. It seems like it was decades ago already. But it wasn't that long ago where this community came together and responded in a time of crisis. And I'm very grateful for all of you who has, who stepped up to help, all of my colleagues in administration and everyone in the city. I did not receive one angry email despite the fact that traffic was what it was during those three days. All of our students and their parents were very supportive during that time. So I just wanted to come back and express my gratitude. I wanted to also update the committee on where we stand right now as we finish this year and we start planning for our driving force for next year. So you may or may not know that we currently run five mini-buses for our in-district special education students and two ECC half buses. We had budgeted for four. We didn't have enough drivers to fulfill the additional drivers here at ECC. But we have five mini-buses that we're currently running, two ECC buses, eight AMSA routes, and 33 Marlboro routes. Alto, that's 48 drivers. Back in December, we had nine openings. We were asking for help from some surrounding districts and were able to run everything with some difficulties, but we were running routes with support. As of today, we have four openings. So we have achieved some success in filling in some of our driver seats since the bid that we did in December. We have more openings. However, there are currently seven drivers in our pipeline. So we are on schedule to, hopefully by the end of this year, to have all 48 seats with drivers in them. We have also communicated to NRT, our provider, the need for Marlboro to have built-in spare drivers. We know on a daily basis, we have anywhere from 5% to 10% vacancies. So ideally, we would have four spare drivers to fill in for any drivers who are out for any reason on any given day. So we are on track to have some spare drivers as well. So things are looking okay right now for next year. And we have added two additional drivers for the ECC because we are hoping to run four buses here next year. That was my update. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the committee? Ms. Matthews.
This is a question from Mrs. Hennessy because I know she'd be asking it.
You know, you're trying to get through this.
Channeling her inner Catherine.
So on the district-wide investments, the additional cameras.
That was my question.
Going back to when we started this whole thing, there was always the question of having the computer space behind it. Because I know you have to keep upgrading as you get there. So I assume we're all set on that area. Because I know the city maintains more of that.
Mr. Markibbs is on top of our storage space of cameras. We currently have plenty of capacity for, to go back many days. And this is just some additional areas that we have identified as opportunities for improved security.
Second question, on the parent communication software. The, I understand that's the initial investment. Is there an annual maintenance cost or licensing cost?
There will be eventually. This covers us for the initial three-year.
Three years, okay, great. And then, on the transportation, I know you said we had 33 routes that ran. But that was after we combined at March, right? I mean.
Combined.
Combined some routes because we didn't have enough drivers as it was?
Yes, so not in FY '23, but in FY '22, when we were coming back full force to school, everyone in person, we cut about 15% of our routes at that time, not because we wanted to, but because we had to. NRT said, we're telling all of our clients, you have to make these cuts. Surprisingly, we were able, thanks to the job of Steve Phelan in the Transportation Office, we were able to find a way to do what we call our shuttle routes. For example, over at Jarek, we have three buses that go to the Heights and the Royal Crest, which are across the street from each other. Those three buses with 150 kids in them do those stops and then come back to the school within 10 minutes and do another one. So we're getting essentially two trips for those three buses. And we do something similar at Kane and something similar at Richer. So we were still running the routes and providing the service, but not having the need for those full drivers.
Great. And the other thing, I know, I know they're in contract negotiations still. But I know when you were talking about the absenteeism where that we, as we have here, that I like the idea of making sure that NRT understands that they should have a bench for us of drivers. But my understanding too is in the contract that has been settled, there is a bonus for attendance. So maybe that'll be part of this one too. So that might help.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll say this. Over the past three or four weeks, we've been very fortunate with just, I think everybody's healthy and the weather is good and attendance has been really, really great. We have not run any routes outside of their posted time for, for a while. So we're very fortunate about that.
That's great.
But it's just, you know, we know that real life happens and we would like to be in a position where we provide consistent, on-time service so that our kids know the bus will come. And the best way to do that is to know that there will be call-outs every day and to be ready to respond.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions?
Just, is the Kubota like a driving vehicle?
Yes, it's, yup, it's heated and it does a wonderful job. It has a blower attachment to it, so it doesn't, it has a couple of attachments. It can push snow, it can blow snow.
Cool.
Cool.
She wants to learn that.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Ms. O'Brien.
Thank you very much. Tonight, I have an update for the school committee on the pathways program evaluation. Marlboro Public Schools had arranged for a comprehensive evaluation of our special education pathways programs. Since the 2020, 2021 school year, the pathways program has expanded from one elementary school to three of the four elementary schools. One of the many areas that was assessed included the consistency and continuity of pathways programs across those schools. Tonight, I will present key highlights of the program evaluation. So just a little bit of background. In special education, school districts are required to conduct annual reviews of their special education programs with a different focus each year. We had identified the pathways programs to be evaluated during the 2020-2021 school year. That evaluation was delayed due to COVID. And at that time, we had the hybrid model going and we just felt that we wanted to wait until we were back full in person before conducting the evaluation. Exit, sorry, entry and exit criteria for student placement in pathways, consistency of programs and services, curriculum, program staffing, and inclusive opportunities are some of the areas that were identified for review. Public Consulting Group, or PCG, was selected to conduct the program evaluation due to their extensive experience with specialized programs within public schools. The review began in December of 2020 and concluded this month. The components of the program eval that PCG had conducted included student file reviews, classroom visits to both the special education pathways program classes as well as general education classrooms that pathway students were included in, data and document analysis, including but not limited to district demographics, budgeted staff FTEs, program descriptions and procedures. And there were focus group interviews, which included interviews of parents, teachers, special education and inclusion, general ed teachers, behavior technicians, educational team leaders, BCBAs, and related service providers like speech, OT and PT. Some of the areas of strength, again, the overall report is 30-plus pages. So what I have, what I'm presenting tonight are some of the key, key highlights, but there's a lot more to it. I do have a full report for the committee for your review. Areas of strength included supportive interactions between students and staff, well-organized classrooms, attempts to foster inclusive opportunities. Programs are appropriately staffed even with unfilled behavior tech vacancies. Explicit direct instruction was observed. We had very good use of assistive technology. They saw individualized supports for students. Well-written IEPs that reflected student performance, methodology, goals and objectives. And goal progress reports were consistently thorough and detail-orientated. Some areas of improvement from the program evaluation included clear entry criteria for pathways, particularly at the Early Childhood Center. Marlboro Public Schools students ages three to five that are placed in the sub-separate programs are at a rate that's slightly, significantly higher than the state average. So for instance, we're, we're almost double the state average for our preschoolers who are in sub-separate programs versus a full inclusion or partial inclusion, which would be our integrated classrooms. As part of that, we need to strengthen the assessment process. And pathway students at the Early Childhood Center account for one-third of our total pathways students. Other areas of improvement include expanding meaningful, meaningful inclusive opportunities with students in the pathways programs. And there's a list of recommendations specific to how we can go ahead and improve our inclusive opportunities for our students. Improve consistency of programs across the schools. And that's in regards to our procedures, practices and curriculum materials. And also, an area of improvement is to promote a positive culture in support of workplace, workspace for pathways program staff. So out of the program review, the recommendations from PCG include but not limited to development of an inclusive pathways program vision and mission. Develop a team at the Early Childhood Center to develop entry criteria, a comprehensive assessment process, and plan to increase inclusive practices. Create a written standard operating procedure manual that will be followed by all pathways programs to ensure consistency of practice. Develop a long-range strategic plan to address findings of the review. Develop a structured professional development plan targeted to specific audiences, which would include general educators, special education teachers, behavior technicians, et cetera, such as related service providers. And also, another recommendation is to conduct an in-depth analysis, analysis of our staffing allocations and develop a transparent staff allocation model. Our next steps was, first tonight, was to present the key findings to school committee. The final report will be shared with Marlboro Public Staff, Marlboro Public School staff who educate and work with our pathway students. Invite stakeholders to an initial meeting with PCG to consider the program evaluation and develop a strategic plan of action. And conduct working sessions over the summer to develop a strategic plan and identify actions for the upcoming school year. And that is my report. Any questions?
Questions from the committee? Ms. Marla Hendra.
Thank you. Thank you. A couple of questions. So just initially, when you mentioned that the program has expanded from one school to three schools. What, why was that? Do we, were there actually more students that we needed to accommodate?
So part, part of it was, before Good Now Elementary was, was opened, we had three classrooms all at Jarek Elementary School. So what we had done was, we had moved some of those, split it and did two classrooms at Jarek and two at Good Now with students from Kane Elementary going to Jarek and students from Richer Elementary going to Good Now. So the only, sorry, last year, we had a bubble of students that were coming from ECC into kindergarten. And the majority of those students were either Richer or Kane students. And so we had opened a classroom at Kane Elementary as well. So Kane Elementary has a pathways program as well as the Therapeutic Learning Center. Jarek has two of the pathways classrooms. Good Now has two of the pathways classrooms. And Richer has our connections program.
Okay, because I remember that each of the specialty programs were scattered from different buildings, but, so there actually are more students?
There, there are. There are, but there's more students who are being included out. So they are not all full-time, so we are getting better at that. Some of the recommendations were, we can improve what those inclusive opportunities are in their participation within the general class.
Okay, so that, and it goes to, my next question is, you had mentioned that a third of the students overall in pathways are at ECC.
Yes.
So does that mean, will all of those continue in pathways as they age up? Do any of them, you know?
So based on, based on the data, which, one, that compared to the state, we are over-servicing students, our preschoolers in sub-separate programs. And the findings from what is being used to decide on, on students who do go into the pathways programs, that we need to do more comprehensive evaluations instead of rely on outside evaluations. So it seems to be that students are inappropriately placed in pathways at the early, there are some students that are inappropriately placed in the pathways program at ECC. As they go into kindergarten and first grade, there, we'll see a trend of kindergarten and first graders who graduate out. So part of that is, well, is it that they made so many gains? Or should they have been in that classroom for that amount of time in the first place?
Got it. And, and are they, they're coming from early intervention programs?
Mostly, there, there are a few move-ins that do come in, but mostly early intervention.
Thank you. These, I think, you know, the, one of the things that I've just been concerned about over the years is we start these programs and then, like, how do we know they're working? Right? Right?
So, to be honest, we do have a lot of work to do with the consistency part between opening the classrooms at Good Now. And then, at Kane, we've had some turnover with special education staff. We've had some leaves of absences with our BCBAs. So, it, we've kind of brewed a perfect storm of having a lot of inconsistencies that we need to work on.
Any other questions? Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Entertainer motion on the minutes of May ninth.
Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, opposed, carries. Public participation. Public participation. Public participation. Seeing none. FY twenty-three, operating budget transfers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a few transfers for the committee's consideration tonight. At the ECC, I'm requesting a transfer of $200 from the custodian line to offset overages in the ten-month clerk line. At Jarwick, I'm requesting a transfer of $30,000 from the custodian line to offset overages in substitute costs. At Richer, I'm requesting a transfer of $200 from the adjustment council line to offset overages in twelve-month clerk. At Whitcomb, I'm requesting a transfer of $18,000 from the EL and reading teacher line to offset overages in math instructional materials, assistant principal, and after-school program lines. At Marlboro High School, I'm requesting a transfer of $12,960 from the science line to offset overages in math instructional materials, software, custodian supplies, and adjustment council line. District-wide accounts, requesting a transfer of $155,165 from the parent and nurse line to offset overages in student transportation, library books, temporary help, and district-wide conferences. In special education lines, I'm requesting a transfer of $283,500 from nurse, hall monitor, community development, district, and in-district special education transportation to offset overages in our district special education transportation, collaborative tuition, nurse substitute costs, wraparound costs, and the legal services accounts for special education. It was a mouthful. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Motion to approve as presented.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, opposed, carries. Update job descriptions, Director of Alternative Education.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've included in the packet an updated job description for the Director of Alternative Education. One of the things that we have been highlighting, we would like to start the process of a discussion district-wide of what the Hildes School will be used for, what programs should remain in Marlboro High School, and different options. It is connected to not only the, our alternative programs, but when we talk about safety and discipline, how we're servicing and providing educational services to students that potentially are not in our schools as well. And so, we've updated that job description to have some short-term goals and outcomes in year one, but also to work moving forward. We also have removed the Metis and ALA positions for that because we really want a specific focus on those programs as we expand those, because we really need those programs to be rigorous and focused on preventing those students from dropping out and graduating from Marlboro Public Schools.
Questions, Ms. Bodenhenger.
I'm just curious, under the statement of duties, educational programs and services, scroll down to the second to last bullet point. I'm just wondering, so assist the principal in coordination and oversight of services for special education and EL students that are participating in the alternative education settings. Does it make sense to add the Director of Special Education and Director of ELL to that? Like, I mean, I would think that it wouldn't just be the principal that they would be working with to determine those, or is it just broadening it?
Yeah. I think that what we try to do is collaborate too with Dr. Riley, because he sees himself as being involved and at the table and then, and then driving some of the work. But you're absolutely right. It should be, and assist the principal and collaborate maybe with the assistant's bed director and director of EL. Yes. We'll make that adjustment. That's great.
And then, just, it kind of, this is Mrs. Matthews.
They probably haven't highlighted.
So, no, just like, just, some of the bullet points throughout it, it goes back and forth between the plural and the singular.
Can you tell three of us were writing it?
Yeah. I mean, and I know you were cutting and pasting, so that, but like, one place where I'm seeing it under management, second to last, or like, third to the bottom, work collaboratively, and then works collaboratively. So, I think it just should be one, all the way through, one tense or another.
Just needs a rereading.
Yeah.
Okay.
That, I'm just double-checking. Yep, that's it for me.
Any other questions? Ms. Matthews.
I choose, and I'll send you offline separate. But, the instruction, under instructional leadership, the last bullet of the previous one, educational program and services, which talks about the fact that under the direction of the principals of the high school and the middle school, then that first bullet should be with the principals of both.
With the principals and?
Right. It should be principals, because it's.
So, the, so where was that other bullet? Because there was specific, the overlap more for the two buildings is when we're developing support services for students that are not in our buildings. Right? So, so more of the excluded students.
Okay.
But developing programs and alternative pathways is more focused on the high school.
Yes.
Does that address yours, or do you still think it should be in both places? We'll look at, we'll look at that, because Dr. Riley and I talked about that for a while, but like, the other position, this is positioned more for the nine, three, twelve.
Right.
There's a little overlap.
Yeah. I think we talked about it a little bit. The workshop was that the seventy-five, twenty-five kind of focus. But, I think it was just more since there's still going to be some curriculum work that needs to be done for both, that there's going to have to be input from both sides at some point. And actually, even from Dr. Scazza, too.
I think that part of it is potentially, that's a good point, because we don't know what our alternative programs are going to look like, or where that entry could potentially be, right? So, yeah. Yeah. So, we'll make that revision, too.
Other questions?
Can I just ask another? So, is the Bridge program considered under this umbrella? Because, no, because there's the educational piece and how that plays out within Bridge, and that is taking place both at the middle and high school levels.
The, so with the Bridge and Transitions Program at Whitcomb and the high school, we have a clinician, and then there's an academic coach. And they are getting the work from the classroom teachers that they would be scheduled in. And so, they are doing the work at times within that program classroom with the support of the academic coach. So, they, they aren't.
It's a separate curriculum.
Right.
Yeah. Got it.
Any other questions? Seeing none. Entertain a motion.
Oh, do we want to do them separately?
Do whatever you want.
Motion to approve the Director of Alternative Education job description.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, opposed, carries. Supervisor of guidance.
Yes. So, this is bringing forward an updated job description that has very little changes from the past, except we're trying to clarify the job. And this job description is focused on guidance. Part of the confusion in the past was that the title was supervisor of counseling and not guidance, but the job description, most of it, other than updating a few areas and being a little bit more explicit. We've talked about the need of, when we're talking about guidance counselors, a majority of that focus is on grades nine through twelve. So, we explicitly say that this is seventy-five percent of the time focused on the high school, with the focus on the middle school would be on the guidance curriculum and the transitional planning of the students going from eighth to ninth grade and supporting that. But other than that, this is something, once again, that we collaborated with Dr. Riley as well afterwards to make sure that it reflected the needs of the high school. There's a couple of specific areas also that we were talking earlier today with transcripts for like, our alternative programs, that this role would be instrumental in. So, it's a position that we've had for a long time, we're just updating the job description.
Other questions? Entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the supervisor of guidance revision.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any further questions?
For both of them, we're good with the uni, like, this one is just minor.
This one is, the other one is, yes, absolutely fine. The only thing with this one is that we are asking, because we are changing that title from counseling, which is in the contract, to guidance. So, yes.
When we go back to the table, we'll just make that.
Yes. So, we've asked for them to, to sign off on that now.
Perfect.
Any other questions? Seeing none. All those in favor, opposed, carries.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Gifts and donations. Middlesex DA Marion Ryan, MHS All Night of $500.
Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve. All those in favor, opposed, carries. Tops Tops for Education. Whitcomb Middle School, $115.20. Kane Elementary School, $50.50.
Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, opposed, carries. Reports of committees. Ms. Hennessy.
Thank you very much. So, I wanted to let everyone know that we, for the policy subcommittee, are trying to get a date. It appears, literally just a little while ago tonight, that the fifteenth of June appears to work for all of our schedules, which is amazing. Good job, everyone. Good team. So, now that we have a date, we'll need to put together an agenda and everything, but I was looking for a timeframe. So, it looks like that will, that will be what we're pulling together. I would say, from the administration standpoint, if you have something certain that you want on there, if any of the other committee members have something certain that they feel like we need to be discussing, please let me know. And we have a few, few things that we'll have to just pull together and add, so I'll update you as needed. Okay? Thank you.
Any other committees? Seeing none. Members forum. Ms. Bodenhenger.
Thank you. Regarding the superintendent's evaluation, I would, Mrs. Matthews is helping me to pull together the template, which my goal is to get out to everyone by May thirtieth. Doable?
Yeah.
Sometime by then, you should all have it in your inbox. I would like them return to me by June thirteenth. So, you'll have a couple of weeks to work on it, and plan to report out at the last meeting, which is June twenty-seventh. Okay? Thank you.
Any other members? Ms. Matthews.
Couple of things. So, I was fortunate to attend the music banquet. Thank you. The awards banquet that they had last night, which I've gone to prior, but obviously, there was a pause with COVID and so on. And I'm thankful that Mrs. Bodenhenger couldn't attend, because.
Would I have been crying?
Oh, we were puddles. We were puddles. Absolute puddles.
Please, me.
We were all puddles. But, one, one of the things that, watching these kids who, two of them we went to Japan with, and, but, they did student reflections, senior reflections, and about a dozen of them spoke. And we have kids that have not been here for very long, who immediately went into the music program and have succeeded, and have made friends, have learned English. And this is what Marlboro's all about. And it was, it, like, made me feel like I've accomplished something as a school committee member, that this is our city. This is what these kids are so proud of and were able to articulate their pride and just, we were all puddles. It was terrible. I brought tissues for tonight, because I knew I'd be a puddle again. But, and I'm sure Mrs. Hennessy will speak to it, and Mrs. Ryan, because their kids were all included as well, but, and we were all there. And they did a wonderful job. And also, for those of you who are interested in music or not, Thursday night is the evening of jazz, or evening of the art, sorry, right? No, the evening of jazz. I'm sorry.
That was awesome.
And, that was last week, yes. And, is it seven or six? I think it says seven to nine-thirty. Seven?
Yeah.
Free admission, Whitcomb Auditorium. Donations accepted for the Music Association, but they're bringing in another performing jazz quartet? I don't know. But they're, they'll be working with the students earlier in the day and then performing, and I hope everybody can make it. These kids have done an amazing job, especially this year. They just, it's grown again, which is nice to see, that music has grown again. COVID definitely put a thing. And then, lastly, I would just like to, Jess isn't here, but our next meeting.
She did email, but she was having car trouble, so she didn't make it.
I would like to congratulate her. Who knows if she'll make it to the next meeting, but because graduation.
She said she's committed to going to all of the meetings. She's, so she's going to come after graduation.
So, but we have graduation prior to our next meeting. So, I want to congratulate.
Oh, right.
All our seniors in whatever they do. I know the mayor will have a nice speech, but we don't get to talk, so. And I look forward to a sunny day on June fourth at eleven a.m.
Not too sunny.
Not too sunny? No.
Too sunny.
Yeah, well, that's true. Don't worry, we always have sunscreen for everybody. So, that's it. Thank you.
Any other members? Ms. Hennessy.
Yeah, I do have to say, absolutely amazing banquet, because the kids spoke from the heart, and you could actually just see, when we had a number of them all talk about having a family and a sense of community, it really was. Kids were cheering for each other as if they had just, you know, had this big game or something and had won something. And it was really great to see the inclusion of eighth, ninth, tenth, eleventh, twelfth, whole way up, and the connections that were made. I have to say, we had a nice little connection of.
Yeah, they did.
Yeah, our trombone players, and it was a lot of fun, I have to say, you know, really looking back upon that connection. And it really spoke to what Mr. Verdom was talking about, is that without necessarily knowing it, the seniors really do become those role models for those kids. And those kids, as they matriculate up, again, become the role models for the kids underneath. Sorry.
The tissues.
But it really, yeah, it really, it really was one of those things that not only were you prideful for your own kids, but you really were so proud of what this program really stands for. And it's exactly that. We had a young man, and he was amazing. Yes, he had a hard time with English, but he had learned so much, and it meant so much. Every single word that he said about the community, the friendships that had been created. There was a kid that had gotten acknowledged, like, literally, hadn't he just gotten? Yeah, he had just come in and been accepted into this group and had made connections, and he had said, like, he felt like he had been there for so much longer. And it really made you proud. When we talk about the whole child being here in Marlboro and how we support it, like, it just spoke to it. The two, the two guys, Kevin and Emerson, who are seniors who play football, and literally, they play the National Anthem, they pad up after they, you know, taken off their percussion, they go out and play their first half. they go out and play their first half, and instead of going in for their, you know, halftime, what do they do? Take off the pads and get out there with their drums and, and play with the marching band, and they don't want to do anything else, like, that meant so much to them. So, and that just means kudos to, you know, Jeff Rosensky and Jimmy Verdone and Jonathan for the, the group. I, I have to say, it's, it's what we have created, and it's something special. There are not a lot of districts out there that would really support like this district does, and I, and I, it's, it is just amazing. So, sorry, had to say it again because I just, I, I wasn't on, yeah, we were like a total puddle, and Michelle, you would have been a mess. So, and the other thing I just want to say is, I apologize. You all knew that I was going to be late. I had the pleasure of attending the CSF Dollars for Scholars Scholarship Recognition tonight, which, CSF is an amazing program that we have here in the community, and I will say, it was lovely to attend, yes, not only as a parent of a student that was receiving a scholarship, but amazing to watch these students and as well to listen about the fabric of our community, these people that are longstanding citizens that have helped in the past in many different ways and are continuing to pay it forward. Marnie Farrell did a wonderful job of being able to kind of like, emcee tonight and to speak about people such as Bernadette LaFallette, and it will make you smile, because I know many of you all know and remember Bernadette. Deb Drew, and hearing, you know, the description about Deb Drew and all that she's done. Mary Lou Vanzini, who was a longtime school committee member and just absolutely committed, you know, I can go on and on, but it was just, makes you proud. It really makes you proud. They gave out over $91,000 this year in scholarships, not only to our graduating seniors from here in Marlboro, but from AMSA, from ASABET, and many of our kids that are in college and coming back because there are reoccurring scholarships. So, I, I just, I have to promote them because it's an amazing little group that could and really need a shout-out for all that they do for our community and, and the families that have given so much. So, thank you. It's an exciting time as a parent of a graduating senior, but it's an exciting time to be a member of the Marlboro School Committee and the Marlboro community as a whole, and thank you for allowing me to do it.
Anyone else?
Can I just add one thing?
Go for it.
So, this was told to me last night, that the, one of the students who just moved here had researched what districts have music programs that he'd get involved with, and they moved to Marlboro because of the music program from Arizona. That's pretty amazing when you think about it. I mean, the support we've given our music program over the years just continues, so I just, made my heart warm. I had to add.
What are you going to add now?
Well, I wasn't at the last night event, but I was at the Night of the Arts, which was last week, and that was a combination of the music program and the visual arts programs, which my daughter had been a big part of when she was in the schools. And I just, I'm continually blown away at not, not only the, I think Dana, you and I were talking about this, not, the techno, the level of technical tools that the kids learn, so that the, the art that they're making is, you know, you know, they're doing clothing construction and drawing, but they're also doing all kinds of incredible computer-generated stuff. But year in and year out, just when you think like, the most talented kids have come through the school district, more show up. I mean, it's amazing every year how talented artistically and musically, you know, a lot of our students are. So, that was a great program. We got to see a lot of the art and then heard performances of both the Voices Required a cappella and the jazz band, which was, they were great. So, that's all.
No. My turn.
Oh, I reviewed the warrant and we'll.
What else is new?
But I have to say it.
So, I'll keep the, the music program going a little bit. For those that were able to make it to the mayor's charity gala last week, so I asked to have the high school jazz band come and play. I told the committee that, so they put it together and they had the jazz band show up. The problem was, I asked for the wrong thing because I thought it was going to be five or six members, and it was 18 or 19 members, so they said, we're not sure where we're going to put them. I said, just fix it. Find, find out where you're going to put them. But I had people all night asking me who these people were playing, so, I mean, they did a fantastic job and congratulate them, so, again, they did a great job there. I also did a second school program this week. Well, that's two in one week. But I went down to the New England Innovative Academy the other day. They were doing a program on AI, and they opened it up for the regional schools and again, smart kids, but they had one of the speakers from MIT that came in and spoke, and she did a phenomenal job. I guess MIT was involved in the creation of AI. So, it was, it was interesting. I had to learn a little bit about it before I went down there to find out why it's so controversial now I understand, the good and the bad of it. I think it's a disaster in the schools, but after that, it's, you know, there's a lot of good that can come out of it. But in talking to some people that really get into this, they said, it's really no different than when we invented computers or when the internet, when John Kerry invented the internet. So, you know, it, it's the same thing. There's a lot of good. We're still trying to figure out the internet and, and figure out how to use it to only good, but that's probably not going to happen, but AI is very similar. So, for the heck of it, when we went back to the office, Trish threw in, write a 200-word.
Graduation speech?
No, speech for Memorial Day.
Okay.
It was instantaneous that it came out with a phenomenal speech. Instantaneous. It was, it was just, you know, I wish I was back in school, so I wouldn't even have to think about writing this stuff.
Now, why do you think the teachers and professors are having a problem?
No, but it was, it was really, really interesting. It, it does have a tremendous amount of good that can come out of it, but there's some things we've got to keep an eye on for the kids, because it can, you know, there's, there's issues with copyrights. One of the kids asked about who, who do you give credit to? And she was saying, that hasn't been determined yet, because they can't figure it out. So, it's, it's going to be an interesting world for the couple, next couple of years with that, but it was a great program, so. Anyone else? Anyone else sign any warrants or anything? Go ahead.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor? Oppose? Carries?